But what they're tackling now is the uprooting, the roots of our new generations to come. And they've figured that that's the way that they could brainwash and eradicate our identity. Um, and it's important, it's a crucial time for not just exile Tibetan community members to rise, but for the international world to actually do something about this, because if not.
Unsilence, Voices of Young Tibetans is a podcast presented by the Foundation for Nonviolent Alternatives, where young Tibetans share their personal stories, experiences, opinions, and journey in exile. Tashi de like, namaste, wanna come, and welcome to our FNWA podcast, Unsilence, Voices of Young Tibetans. Since the illegal occupation of Tibet by China, thousands of Tibetans were forced to flee their own lands. These very Tibetans are now spread throughout the world, across the continents, carrying forth this very legacy. This new generation of Tibetans have come to the fore and have become the pioneers in adopting ingenious methods to tackle the very unyielding Chinese communist regime. In this context, I welcome our guest. She is the youth icon among Tibetans as her name is very much synonymous with Tibet. She has represented Tibet in international conferences, Human Rights Summit, and is well-known among the big media houses. She recently starred in Al Jazeera's documentary Home Away From Home, The Untold Story of Canada's Little Tibet, and is recognized in my Queen's Top Fifty Power List of 2022. Welcome to the podcast, Shimila Mulla.
Thanks, Lee. It's a pleasure to join you, Dondi.
So Shimila Mulla, uh, I think all many of Tibetans were aware of your recent participation in the Future of Tibet Conference, which took place in Paris. So one thing to notice was how you were, I think you were the only member who took part in both these conferences, be it in Washington and the one held in Paris. So what were your takeaways from this?
Um, first and foremost, I think it's important to mention that Future of Tibet was a space that was not necessarily from a, from a specific organization. It was a bunch of individuals that had an idea, wanted to gather about a specific topic, which is future of Tibet, what is it going to look like and how do we prepare for it? Um, and so that was quite intriguing and the first one that was held in Washington DC. I generally just saw the lineup of speakers and thought quite a prestigious lineup and um, didn't want to miss out on an opportunity to be uh, one of the only two female speakers and also probably the only youth speaker there. Um, and so, I mean, apart from forty-plus youth, uh, so I definitely took up the chance and went to DC to speak there. Um, and then, of course, it was a wonderful discussion, but some of the feedback included, you know, including more women leaders, which we have plenty of, and also young speakers. And they were very keen on hearing the feedback and also welcomed me into the organizing committee for the Paris one. And then, so the one that was held in Paris, I was very happy to see not only did we have a lot of experts, female experts speaking, uh, but also a lot of young folks joining in the discussion. And we also included a workshop session, which was scenario planning, uh, within the three-day workshop. So I think the takeaway is where we definitely need to be having more of these conversations. We definitely need to be having more trainings. And I think what is unique about this is that there is an evolving nature of this conference, where they're adapting as they go in the different spaces based on the niche and the diaspora. So I hope that we'll continue to do that. Um, and perhaps something that we can improve on is how do we disseminate the knowledge that was gained, uh, the takeaways to the general public moving forward.
Okay, so according to the schedule by the Future of Tibet, I think, I think the third one is supposed to happen in India, right? So any, you know, like any spoilers for us regarding that note?
It's definitely happening in India, yes. Uh, we don't have a lot of details, but we would like to continue the workshop of scenario planning there. Um, and yeah, I hope that you'll be present there.
Definitely, like if it's Delhi, like we rest assured that I'll be there. And I think a plethora of Tibetans in India are very much excited to take part in this very, you know, engaging and, as you mentioned, much-needed conference among Tibetans in exile. So moving on, Shimila, like, uh, one thing that has really caught the attention of the international media nowadays is the recent, you know, unhindered, should I call it, mass uprising occurring in China, whereby the Chinese people themselves have come forward and called for the removal of the Chinese President Xi Jinping. So what are your thoughts on that?
Um, well, first and foremost, kudos and hats off and solidarity with anyone who stands up against dictatorship, uh, because power really lies in the people and should not be in any one single individual uh, that seeks to prioritize their own self-gain over the people. Um, I think as a Tibetan, it's nice to see that finally we have Chinese folks understanding. Um, I had an experience where recently when I was in Toronto at one of the rallies, uh, a young Chinese woman asked me and said, you know, I love my country. Um, I don't ever see an issue with them, but um, I finally start to see that there needs to be change, that that needs to happen in China. Um, and I know you're a Tibetan, can you tell me, uh, you know, some of your challenges and your experiences as a Tibetan? And for me, it was mind-boggling because um, the very school that I was outside, you know, three years ago or four years ago, these are the same international Chinese students that were sending me death threats and rape threats and saying that, you know, I didn't deserve to be the Student Union President because I was Tibetan descent. Um, and here they are now, you know, reaching out and asking, what are your experiences as a Tibetan? And it's no doubt that all of that information is available online, but for the courage for them to be able to come up to a Tibetan and ask that question, you know, I thought it was very different and a step in the right direction for our future as a Tibetan, but also for the human rights movement at large. Um, but one thing I would also like to mention is that this is a small opening. Uh, this revolution is only going to be as big as um, as the people will make it to be, right? Because we already hear the CCP is uh, slowing down on some of the zero-COVID policies. They're easing up, easing down, right? And we all know the, a lot of the tactics that the CCP uses. It's one step back, but two steps forward, right? So they'll ease it down whenever it's necessary for them, so that they can continue to move forward. Um, and so how are we, human right activists, advocates, uh, folks in the free world, going to use this opportunity to continue the conversation about human rights inside of Tibet, East Turkestan, Hong Kong, Taiwan, and also a freer China?
So Shimila, something interesting you mentioned is about your university experience, right? I think uh, most of the Tibetans are very much aware of it, but for our audience, could you like uh, emphasize and highlight your experience as the student council at the University of Toronto Scarborough?
Um, just about almost four years ago, uh, February twenty nineteen, I ran for um, my university's student union body government. And um, I ran to become the president, but before the results had even come out as a candidate, there was an uproar in uh, the international Chinese student uh, spaces. And um, I very much, uh, you know, I'm sure that uh, there was connection with the Chinese embassy, but basically they were directed to send me threats and intimidation tactics to step down as a candidate. Um, and then things only got worse when they found out that I won my presidency and um, I had thousands of death threats and rape threats against me, my family members. Um, you know, and intimidation tactics that they used throughout the year, where they would follow me into the washroom on campus, um, and constantly surveilling uh, the people that would in, you know, interact with me as well. And so that is an ongoing case, actually. I've dealt with all levels of security in the Canadian government, have done various testimonies in global affairs, Canada, um, at the Foreign Affairs Committee. Uh, various parliamentarians and senators I've met in regards to this issue, because this speaks to foreign influence of um, you know, various governments in our country. And in Canada, we recently also found out that within the federal election, almost nineteen MPs were, had a connection with the Chinese embassy, uh, which is a shocker, but also not really a shocker as a Tibetan, because we know that that's one of the ways that Chinese government tries to, you know, infiltrate a lot of the different spaces to continue to surveil our diasporic communities. That's one. And then another one is, you know, Saint God Defenders recently put out a report that there is about fifty-three countries or fifty-two countries that have about a hundred or so police stations that exist illegally in different countries. You know, one can only imagine the initial surveillance that already existed upon the social media world, but now there's an additional barrier that is a physical police station that exists to circumvent uh, the existing rule of law in our countries.
The situation for Tibetans and those under the Chinese dominion is very depressing. And as you mentioned, you know, like the illegal police stations and, you know, like these transnational aggression that China is carrying out without any regard to international law and the thought process of other individuals. I mean, Chinese history itself says that they had undergone such a severe and very bleak history, right? When they were under semi-colonial rule, but it's very sad to see how they're applying the very same tactics to the people, you know, like under them. So very interesting, Shimila. So like now, I think we can move a bit to your personal side, like uh, growing up in, you grew up in India, right? And you had a lot of different engagements when you were young, but what were your goals then? And did you see yourself servicing for Tibet and the Tibetans?
Oh, that's quite a heavy question, you know, as a displaced person for, I think, anybody in the world. Um, asking about home and childhood upbringing brings a lot of memories, um, a lot of trauma. But um, for me personally, I actually moved to Canada at the age of eleven and, you know, Dondi, we grew up in UTI together. Um, so I think my time in UTI up until I was eleven, I knew that I was a Tibetan, I was different from my peers at school. Um, but did I question my Tibetan identity? Not so much. I think, and I often say this when I meet young people around the world, is that, you know, our parents' generation was so much of survival. Um, and for us, we have the opportunity to be in, in a mode of thrival, right? Where we don't have to worry about food on the table. Um, and there is an opportunity for us to engage in questions, deeper questions about our identity, um, our history and uh, why we are the way we are. And so for me, I being uh, my time in India, I definitely didn't ask these deeper questions. I had always felt othered, um, which continued uh, even in Canada, because I realized very soon that, you know, I was not the majority. Um, and even if I was, um, being a person of color, which is a majority in Canada and many other Western nations, um, my viewpoints as a displaced person, as a person who comes from Tibet but does not know what Tibet looks like or have um, a well-understanding of Tibetan history, um, I often felt othered, which made me more curious, uh, wanting to get in, involved in various organizations. And that started off the sort of work and service to the Tibetan community. And I think my service or the work that I do in the Tibetan movement uh, is very much actually self-cherishing, uh, because it makes me feel good, you know? I don't feel othered when I'm in the movement, because that's where I found the power of community, the love of community, and that is what drives me now and will continue to drive me, I think, for the rest of my life.
And the beautiful, most beautiful thing about that is how the love that you generate through such actions, you know, it touches upon other Tibetans and even non-Tibetans. And this love is, you know, it forms a continuous chain which might, and which hopefully would grow on and on. So very interesting childhood. And as you said, Shimila Mulla, both of us were from UTI, right? And in a way, for me itself, like, until I joined a Tibetan school, like, I had no idea of Tibet literally. But it was only then that I knew about my own heritage, my own culture. And it was really, you know, important and vital for us Tibetans to know that. So Shimila, something that uh, all of us Tibetans and those following you notice is how you are very much active in sports. And recently, we have the World Cup going on, right, the FIFA Football World Cup? So I personally, even I like sports. So I find this very interesting dynamic between sports and activism, how especially in a team sport, you have to work collectively together. So how can we as Tibetans and even as humans learn from sports when it comes to activism?
I think um, I'd like to take it, take this question in two layers. So first and foremost, to answer your question, um, there's so much that we can learn from every aspect of life. You know, I think life is so beautiful, um, you know, watching ants, you know, have, give, taught me lessons about teamwork. Um, so sports, definitely, it's humans working together to, towards a common goal. Um, there's a sense of competition, which in practicality and in all reality does exist within nations, within, you know, systems. Any sort of um, social existence has some degree of competition. And so sports allow us to recognize that competition, but also allow for space for sportsmanship, which respects each other, right? And so there's so many values that can be learned from sports, to be able to work together for a common goal. And even if it's a single sport such as singles badminton, uh, there's so much aspects of a team um, behind it, because it's not just that individual that is able to, you know, win the match. It's, it's the coach, it's the trainer, it's the, you know, physiotherapist that makes sure that they're okay. Um, you know, the gym cleaner, right, that makes sure that the floors have been wiped on the gym. Uh, so there's so many aspects, millions of causes and conditions that come together for anything to happen. And I think that general teaching can come from sports, but sports is also just one of the avenues. Um, so that's one. And then you just mentioned the FIFA World Cup. I think there's, there's another question layer, because authoritarian regimes have generally used any sort of spectacle to be able to distract the masses. Uh, and I think it's important for us in the human rights world or as a human who cares about freedom, justice, and democracy, to notice that when it is happening and also not just notice it, but call it out. So uh, for example, yeah, the Beijing Olympics, right? As a Tibetan, we all are well-aware that when the Summer Olympics in two thousand and eight happened, Tibetans inside of Tibet rose in thousands, uh, telling the international world that, you know, we don't trust China, uh, human right conditions inside of Tibet is absolutely terrible. And lo and behold, the international world didn't listen to the Tibetan communities despite us rising up. And now in twenty twenty-two, it wasn't just the Tibetans when uh, we were rising up. This time, there were Hongkongers, Uyghurs, you know, Taiwanese, rest of the world really diplomatically boycotting the Beijing Olympics because of, you know, the failed promises in two thousand and eight. And so similarly, when now Qatar is hosting the FIFA World Cup, you know, what type of responsibility do we have to engage in that conversation? Um, and how do we hold these governments accountable, but all while also not taking away from the athletes, right? And so there's so many complexities and nuances that one needs to think about. It's challenging, it's hard to always think about, you know, so many layers of politics in something as simple as sports that makes you happy to watch, uh, is, you know, uh, a fun gathering time for your friends after a stressful night. I agree, but, you know, I think it's important for us, wherever we are, to acknowledge our privileges, um, to be able to understand and just ask the questions. Um, and because when we do ask these questions and go a little bit further than we are, than our comfort zones, I think we are contributing to a larger good. I met the uh, migrant workers and uh, leaders of the migrant working movement from Qatar, actually, uh, when I was in Oslo, Norway last year, I think last year, yes, last year. Um, and, you know, I met someone named Bilal and he told me about the conditions while building up towards the FIFA World Cup, that was last year. And he was telling me amount of deaths that were occurring on a daily basis a year before the games were happening, just to be able to make the stadiums. And just to hear those conditions, you know, I was thinking absolutely nothing. And for me, for an avid sports fan and someone who, you know, you know, bloats about being the athlete of the year of my high school, it was challenging to navigate that. But it was also a, a moment of accountability and responsibility that I had, because I was also a prominent activist during the Beijing Olympics, asking people to boycott the Olympics. Um, so if I'm asking people to boycott the Olympics because China is not deserving of hosting these games, and we very well knew that China was hosting these games because they wanted to shy away and run away from being held accountable for human rights and be known as the only country that has hosted both the Summer and Winter Olympics. So similarly, how is Qatar using this to sportswash uh, the human right violations? And so um, I think it's important to ask these questions and make sure that we hold ourselves accountable in terms of our solidarity work and our own asks about our own movements, but also be able to enjoy the reality of just resting when you're having a stressful day.
Yep, definitely, Shimila. You really brought out the, you know, inner workings of the sports industry these days. I must call like, you know, sports is sports, but these days you have this whole big industry behind it, especially being in India, you know, the level of migrant workers involved in it. It's very saddening to hear and even witness it. So yeah, thank you, Shimila, for this very, you know, enlightening view on sports and activism. So Shimila, like, I would like to now focus on how we Tibetans, you know, like, in nineteen fifty-nine, due to unhindered and harsh might by the Chinese Communist Party, we Tibetans were forced to escape in exile, and the first home that we came to was India. But eventually, now what we see is scores of very, these very Tibetans migrate from India to Western nations. So what are your thoughts on this and does it impact the Tibetan government in exile or also known as the Central Tibetan Administration in any way, which is based in India? And just listening to one of your main points, which you mentioned during the Future of Tibet. In Paris, you mentioned how Tibetan youths were losing hope. I mean, not were, losing hope to the, this very government is very worrying.
Hmm, so, yes, I think there will be a huge impact on the Central Tibetan Administration, given that most of its um, workings and physical entity is based uh, in India. But I think also it's very meaningful for it to be in India, right? Um, so the mass exodus, I mean, Tibetan community in the diaspora, any, any community that has been displaced, for them to survive is key, right? And um, their survival in India, given that, except for the exception that has been made from the fifties to the seventies that were born um, in India, most Tibetans born in India and raised in India, Nepal, uh, do not have citizenship. So what does that entail for Tibetan community members uh, while growing up? What does that entail for young Tibetans who want to aspire to become business, uh, you know, uh, folks that will own land and, you know, do a lot of large-scale initiatives? Um, there's a lot of implications in that. Um, and for me, living in Toronto and having a passport that allows me to travel in different countries and also engage in direct action, for example, when I did the protest in Greece, um, shout out to SFT for that. Um, when I did that, I had, you know, access to Canadian government officials, embassies, to be able to navigate support for my uh, release, right? But when you do not have a passport, when you're working around with a yellow book called Identification Certificate and IC, which even, you know, some, to some degree, even the Indian officials do not recognize when you're trying to leave from an airport, it's challenging. It's not, it's very hard to even survive at that point when you do not have paperwork that says that you belong to a specific country or you have rights to that you can exercise. Even as a refugee, how exactly are we navigating the world as a refugee that is not recognized um, under the UNHCR? You know, there's a lot of barriers that exist for Tibetans that live in exile, especially in diasporic communities that do not recognize citizenship for them. So for them to move to Western countries, I think every Tibetan has the right to survive and uh, do what is needed for their survival, um, and to meet their needs. Um, so that's that. And given that there is already a organic shift towards Western countries, I think it's important for us to um, build institutions and systems of support for those communities as we navigate. For example, when there was a huge uh, community shift in Paris, um, you know, there were a lot of them that didn't have paperwork in Paris. And so there was a lot of community organizing that happened for thousands of Tibetans who were in Paris, living under bridges and very terrible circumstances, to get paperwork. Uh, and it was mainly the Tibetan community that rallied around to find that support for them. So I think that sense of community needs to continue no matter where we go. Sense of oneness and unity needs to continue where we go. And in terms of the last statement that you made, I do have a fear that um, if we do not act now, that the, the faith and the hope that we have in CTA might decline. Has it declined now? Uh, I have not made that statement. Uh, I would say that it was more of a warning, uh, or a fear to, to just say that we must act, we must act now, because time is running out. Um, change will continue to happen in our communities. And so what are we going to do to tackle those challenges that will appear as change uh, happens? So that is a question that I think we must tackle together. Um, I don't think it has happened now, because I have full faith in my Central Tibetan Administration as a young Tibetan growing up in exile who doesn't have direct contact. But as just someone who grew up in exile, I have full faith in our Central Tibetan Administration today.
Definitely, Shimila Mulla. You really brought a very interesting point on this whole migration dynamic, because this topic is very much talked about in our Tibetan community right now. And your point about how, you know, Tibetans also have the right to live for themselves, survive, sustain, is very much important and vital as a human being at the end of the day. So yeah, very interesting, Shimila. So Shimila, you also mentioned like about the Tibetans in Canada, your Canadian citizenship. So on that note, I would like to ask, what are your views of Tibetans in Canada when it comes to the Chinese occupation of Tibet? And any particular initiatives that we Tibetans worldwide, you know, can replicate moving forward? So yeah, Sangay Jap is someone who comes to mind as an initiative. So Canada has a large number of Tibetans living together and it, this has made it possible to pass various legislation for Canada, like we have this whole month celebrating Tibet, which is only found in Canada. So how can Tibetans in Canada use these various platforms efficiently in resolving the Tibet-China conflict?
I think speaking to it generally, um, first and foremost, for any community that has been displaced, specifically the Tibetan community, um, from, our mere existence is resistance. The fact that you're still alive and you're, you know, thriving in whatever ways you are as a Tibetan, you know, I think it's important to recognize what the Chinese government is currently trying to do and has been trying to do since nineteen fifty-nine is to completely eradicate the Tibetan identity. Uh, and so when there is a colonial body out there that is constantly trying to, you know, erase your language, your religion, your nomadic way of life and your existence in diaspora through these, all these long-arm tactics, your mere existence and the fact that you're surviving and you're thriving in whatever ways you are, that is part of our movement, it's resistance. And that's why I say that every Tibetan that is born after nineteen fifty-nine is born an activist. Um, for specifically Tibetans in Canada, I think for any of us, it's important to recognize what our role is in the movement. First and foremost, the question that we must ask is what does it mean to be a Tibetan? Having an answer to that, right? And then after that, I think, you know, you can shift towards understanding what your role is in the movement. Um, and just recognizing that at this point in life, this is what type of role I play in the movement, in my own life, in my family, in all of the other various spaces and roles that you play in your intersectional lives, right? So for Tibetans in Canada specifically, the fact that we have access to citizenship, uh, that we can identify ourselves as Tibetan Canadians, uh, we have access to Canadian government. So we can go from, you know, just having gorché. Every lakar, uh, we have, Toronto gorché is so popular, our folk dance, traditional folk dance. Um, every Wednesday, we perform dance, uh, there's hundreds of people that come out during summertime, you know, seen three hundred to four hundred people show up uh, at this small park, you know? And the beauty of it is even just last Wednesday, uh, I saw videos of kids, probably like four years old, who were born in Canada, uh, are watching fourteen, fifteen-year-olds who are also born in Canada, singing and dancing flawlessly to Tibetan music from Tibet. Um, and that is magical for me. And then also seeing that dancing happen, happening uh, alongside eighty, ninety-year-old grandparents who are either dancing or watching from the sides, that is the intergenerational magic of community that is happening through gorché. Uh, and one can think that that is not political, but that is for me absolutely political. Um, you know, and it's actually a core uh, identity marker for Toronto Tibetans, uh, because wherever else we go as Toronto Tibetans, they're always like, oh, Toronto gorché is the most popular. And so everybody's copying our dance moves. I think that's uh, one, definitely an aspect of um, just Tibetan-Canadian identity. Um, and then the other is, you know, access to government. I think that's the biggest thing for me as an activist and an advocate, is how do I hold the Canadian government accountable for um, the safety of Tibetan Canadians? Again, the police stations, uh, my experience in the Student Union is not something that is unique to just me, right? Many Tibetans know that uh, we have spies in our community that have been implanted by the Chinese government and have those connections. So, you know, as a Canadian, that's, that's not allowed on Canadian soil. Um, and so what is the Canadian government doing to hold them to account for that? And those are our And those are our rights to be able to exercise. Though in many ways, as a Tibetan, it's a privilege to be able to have that, but as a Tibetan Canadian, it's my right. And I have the right to question them at, you know, at my school, but also at the highest level of government in parliament sessions. So I think it's important for us to recognize our role in the movement and navigate different opportunities and tactics that we can use to further our movement. And you've already talked about the Heritage Month, which is great. You know, July is an Heritage Month. And there's so much more that we can do. In America, we've seen the Tibet Policy Act. We also have the Tibetan, the Reciprocal Access to Tibet Act. Those are things that we should also try to replicate in Canada, but also in all parts of the world. We want to see that in Europe. How about in India? Given that there is rising China, how can in the Indian government and Indian parliamentarians show up for Tibetans for India's security in different ways that is concrete? And, you know, India has been a phenomenal ally to the Tibetan movement. But I would love to see a shift in the way that they show up for the Tibetans. And I think that is something that Tibetans in India can also lobby for. I'd love to see advocacy points that are coming out from, you know, Indians in, in terms of solidarity and allyship to the Tibetan movement.
Definitely, Chimila. And when you mentioned India, I think India has also recently, we had this All India Tibet Support Groups Conference and they came out with this Delhi Declaration whereby they cemented their support. But yeah, as you mentioned, there are things that we can do and most likely in the coming months, weeks, there will be concrete, you know, developments happening. That much I can assure you. And on that note about policy advocacy, like you mentioned how, you know, like in America, we have the Tibet Support Act, the T R A Reciprocal Access Act and all this thing regards to Tibet and helping the Tibetans. But here, like, one issue that is very concerning for us Tibetans is the reincarnation issue. So what is your take on this and can the Canadian governments do something about it? The reincarnation of His Holiness the Dalai Lama?
When it comes to the topic of the reincarnation of His Holiness the Dalai Lama, I think it's important to recognize that no other factor, external factor, or as much as we think will impact, will impact as much as His Holiness himself. And so, and the Office of His Holiness the Dalai Lama and the Tibetan people. So giving them the agency to decide and continue with their traditional practice and process that has been in place for thousands of years should continue. And that's where the focus should be, in giving the agency to the Tibetan people, to the Office of His Holiness the Dalai Lama and His Holiness, of course. For other nations, I think it's about solidifying their role as an ally and solidarity to the Tibetan people and the Central Tibetan Administration. That is what needs to be solidified. When the connection to the Central Tibetan Administration and the Tibetan people is solidified, no matter what we go through, I think, whether it is reincarnation process, whether it's disunity, whether it is, you know, the diasporic immigration issues and migration issues, anything. When there is solidified support, no matter what the topic is, the support will follow. Which is what I want to emphasize because I don't think it should be an issue-based topic when it comes to deciding and discussing Tibet. And I see that decoupling often happen, right? People want to talk about Tibet only when it's about mindful meditation. People want to talk about Tibet only when, you know, China stops their trade deals with their respective countries. And Tibet is often used as a pawn in their own political game, right? So none of that, you know, for me as a Tibetan, I'm just kind of tired of so-called allies just using our name for the heck of it. And oftentimes, you know, just getting access to His Holiness, books that have been, you know, written, tons of them that have gained millions of dollars in surplus and profit, but nothing goes to the Tibetan movement. And I question, why is that? You know, you should have full right to do whatever you want with your own business ventures. I completely agree with that. But what is your responsibility and where is the accountability to the knowledge that you've taken from these Eastern countries? And that's not just a Tibet issue, I think often happens in the West where knowledge from the has been stolen and, you know, an example is just artifacts that exist in, you know, British museums of India and a lot of other countries that they've colonized, that continue to exist as an artifact, but is actually a very important and crucial aspect of their own tradition back home and should be returned in all right. So, speaking to it at large, I think the topic that should be discussed is not an issue-based subject of Tibet, but rather the Tibetan movement at large and who has the agency to decide the future of Tibet and how these other nations will support them.
Absolutely, Chimy. And right now you mentioned a very important point about colonialism. We can see this very thing, which all of us thought that after the Second World War, it would be eradicated, but it's currently happening in Tibet. The colonial boarding school, a lot of unhindered and unreported. The only known thing is we come up with this colonial boarding school that's happening. But the question is how many more are unrecorded, unknown? So what are your thoughts on that, Chimy?
Honestly, it breaks my heart to see that, you know, we often talk about in the world as, you know, like that never again sort of phrase that is often used when something happens. Folks are, you know, committed to upholding the values of human rights and the freedom and dignity of people. But the situation inside Tibet has just continued to worsen every single year, decade. And the Tibetans inside of Tibet have only, you know, been crying out for international support more and more. And the question is, you know, when, until when do we continue on asking for support for the international world to just listen? And like you mentioned, the tactics that are being used by the Chinese government is nothing new. You know, they're simply copycats and duplicates of other authoritarian regimes. And the colonial boarding schools, like, I live in Canada, we have already recognized that what the Canadian body, colonial body has done to the indigenous children was a genocide and is currently still a genocide for the fact that it exists in child welfare systems, even though the residential schools were closed. And, you know, residential schools were closed in nineteen ninety-six, the last one, which is not far back. And so it's not something that is like out of touch in terms of back then in history. It's literally just about twenty-six years ago. And so for us to know that, that it was wrong and has been recognized around the world, we're allowing that to happen right now to Tibetan children. Children as young as four years old are being stripped away and coerced and forced away from their families for five days a week. And Dr. Galala, who is one of the spearheads of this report, has said to me that within three months, he saw some of his nieces and nephews not being able to communicate with their grandparents anymore. Within three months, right? And this is all of the Tibetan children that we're talking about, where there's almost a million children in these colonial state-run boarding schools right now. Along with that, we also have a new report that has been talking about the forced DNA sampling. More than one point two million Tibetans have been forced to give away their blood and DNA samples that has been collected by actually an American company. American company Thermo Fisher is the one that gives and sells their DNA sampling kits to China so that they can collect these samples of our Tibetan people. Where is the international world here? You know, we all, I don't think it takes any sort of logic to understand that this is wrong. That you're stripping away children from their families so that they could forget their own language. And you know, at these colonial state-run boarding schools, they're not just teaching them Chinese instead of Tibetan. They're teaching them to think in Chinese. They're making them forget any aspect of their Tibetan identity, not just the language and religion, which are core pillars of our identity. But making them completely forget. And that's, you know, a testament to how strong the Tibetan people are, I think, to me. You know, the Chinese government is clearly understood that they cannot eradicate the Tibetan identity in the older generations. The faith that Tibetans inside of Tibet have in His Holiness the Dalai Lama and the Central Tibetan Administration and the Tibetan people is unshakable. And so they've already realized that. And so they're just waiting for the older generation to pass. But what they're tackling now is the uprooting, the roots of our new generations to come. And they've figured that that's the way that they could brainwash and eradicate our identity. And it's important, it's a crucial time for not just exile Tibetan community members to rise, but for the international world to actually do something about this. Because if not, I don't want to say it, but yeah, I don't want to think about it.
Definitely, Chimy. And on top of this, like, I think the whole penetration to the Tibetan education system goes beyond the boarding school as well, like, I think it was last year or this year, like, there was a announcement by the whole Chinese Education Department of how like people, I mean Tibetans in Tibet, in China occupied Tibet, if they were to pursue higher education, they had to, you know, I mean, parrot out or, you know, just keep in mind the Mao's thought, the Lenin's thought. If they were against it, they were not allowed entry to school. So, you know, such ridiculous things are happening there and it's very sad to, you know, witness these things happening to our very sisters and brothers inside Tibet. So yeah, Chimy, moving on, like, I think one interesting aspect that you have currently been through recently is your, is the election at Parkdale High where just with some few votes, I must say, like, you lost. Otherwise, you would have been the first Tibetan to, you know, win such a prestigious seat and serve not only the Tibetans inside Canada, but the Canadians who showed overwhelming support to you during that, this very period. So what were your experiences then, Chimy?
I think quite a lot of mixed emotions. I've just finished the campaign and I was traveling quite a bit in between and I just got back this week. So I haven't gotten a chance to sit down and really reflect on the whole journey yet, so excuse my not-so-profound reflection, but if I were to sum it up in one sentence, I think it really showed me the power of community. Power of community is so strong and it's so magical actually because, you know, in many ways, I present myself as a confident young individual who's aware of her identity. But to be able to take on office at the age of twenty-six, I would have become the youngest city councillor in Toronto if I was successful. And so I was really, you know, tackling a much larger obstacle. But the only reason I knew that my attempt even was possible was because of community and it was that there was an urgency and need for change. The current situations inside of not just the Tibetan community, Little Tibet that exists in Parkdale High Park, it's all a Parkdale High Park and the current situation in city of Toronto where we have a housing crisis, you know, there is. During the pandemic, we didn't see the politicians come around and support us in the ways that we needed to. There is road safety issues. The police budget continues to increase, but so does the police violence and brutality. And so where are ways that we can have, use, we can use, or for me, where I could use the training and activism and advocacy skills that I've gained in the Tibetan movement to apply that in a larger scale to not just benefit Tibetan people, but all of people inside of Toronto and make that difference. And so that hope really came from the community and I think that is, again, the power of community that strengthened me throughout the whole process because if you think about it from a traditional politician point of view, I didn't come from a rich background, I don't have any political families, I don't have any friends in the political system the way that, you know, they would just kind of come and support me, nor did any of the large-scale progressive organizations endorse us. So we were really quite the underdog in our campaign. I remember the local newspaper, not so local, but Toronto Star, they did a survey, a poll and they they guessed that we would have, they estimated about two percent of votes going to us. There were six candidates and they assumed that we would get, you know, around fourth or fifth, fourth, with only two percent of the votes. And the incumbent guy that I was going against had been winning for sixteen years. And he's not just, you know, been there for a really long time. He's also one of the most progressive councillors on council. So the society is saying that he's one of the better councillors and I'm here saying I can be better than him. And so is, is the community ready for that type of, you know, radical change? Was a question that, you know, many people asked and clearly people said only a two percent chance. But when the results came out, we really shook a lot of heads because the incumbent had thirty-five and thirty-five percent of the votes and we came second with thirty-one percent of the votes. And so we definitely reemphasized the power of community and the power of people because we really had nothing but community. And our slogan for the whole campaign was bringing community into council, into city council. And so we really did that, I think. Without really having a seat now, there, we've built a pathway for community to see themselves inside of city council.
Definitely, Chimila. And I think you also, you know, you readied the people of Parkdale to, you know, coming change in the coming years. So yeah.
I was just a medium. I was, I was just a medium because it is really the power of the people that was channeled through our campaign, through the name Chimy, our Choose Chimy campaign. Because thousands of people were there to show up for us, you know, and it was just magical to see how many people were ready for that change because the reality is not changing for so many people. You know, the reality of the housing crisis, the rent is continuously increasing. How, but their salaries don't increase, minimum wage is not increasing. So how is their condition going to, you know, how is anybody supposed to think? Just sit for a moment and breathe if they're not in the rush race of just survival again, right? And so I really do think that I was a medium that was able to channel a lot of that support. And I think that that has been my role throughout the Tibetan movement as well because you saw the pictures of boycott Beijing Olympics, the action. And it was my face along with Jason and Fern, but really it was the work of thousands of hours of blood, sweat and tears of the organizers from Students for Free Tibet International and all the other organizations that did the work. Because they did all of the background support and the follow-up support, which they continue to do as my court case is continuing, unfortunately. That, you know, they've been providing. So it really is the power of community.
Definitely, Chimila. So finally, I would like to ask you whether you have any messages to our fellow Tibetans and the plethora of, you know, people around the world who continue to support and stand in solidarity with us Tibetans?
To the allies and supporters first, I think first and foremost, thank you. Sincere gratitude from a person that has never seen Tibet and is a Tibetan. Because it's not easy to stand in solidarity and be an ally to an ever complex conflict. But you still continue to do so. So I appreciate that and I thank you for doing what you do. However, I'd like to remind you that the word ally, being an ally is not just a badge that somebody wears, right? It's not just like, hey, I'm a supporter of the Tibetan movement. It's ally, being an ally is a verb. You need to constantly act. Right? It's an action that needs to happen that allows you to be be an ally or be continued to known as an ally, an ally for our movement. So I'd encourage you to ask yourself, how do you show up for our movement? You know, do you post something on Instagram or do you show up at one of our rallies? March tenth, everywhere around the world Tibetans are rising. So can you join a March tenth rally? When they're doing a petition drive, which we're currently doing for Thermo Fisher to stop selling their DNA kits that are collecting illegally blood samples of Tibetans inside of Tibet, sign that petition for us. Well, how else are you showing up for the Tibetan movement? And based on your own role, wherever you are, I feel that there are different ways that you can show up for the Tibetan movement. Even just having a conversation and saying, hey, you know, China actually is very small as a country because all they are consisted upon is, you know, a bunch of colonized nations. Otherwise, like East Akistan, like Tibet, and so like Southern Mongolia. And so that's one, I think. Naming it, showing up is important and acting. For Tibetans inside, or for Tibetans in exile, lots of love. I have nothing but love for each and every single one of you. I have nothing but love for each and every single one of you. Um and the message I have is, I think, never feel alone. I think in exile, um it's hard uh to survive, to thrive. There's a lot of pressures, there's a lot of responsibilities that we carry as ambassadors of Tibet, uh you know, and. No matter where you are in your life, I think, I think it's important to know that there's. A community, a strong community behind you, um and not to mention the Tibetans inside of Tibet. Just take a look at them, right? Read about some of the things that they're doing so creatively with small acts of resistance that, you know, are so. Uh brilliant in many ways, um of ways of showing their solidarity and their faith and their loyalty to His Holiness the Dalai Lama. And also their hope that they have for Tibetans in exile. Uh and so we can only do that when we are taking care of ourselves, one. Two, uh understanding, you know, what that being a Tibetan means for us. And then three, understanding the role that we play in the Tibetan movement. Um and this is not to berate yourself or feel down about not being able to do much, but being able to find the gra- gratitude in what you're able to do. And recognizing the opportunities that are available within your circle and within your current circumstances of how you can also show up. For our Tibetan movement at large. And remember, we're all in this together and this is for everybody out there. We're all in this together because the fight for the people will continue. Uh has can, has been happening for eons and eons before and will continue on. Um and at every step of the way, you have the opportunity to do something that is right.
So, thank you, Chimila. Like, you mentioned a lot of, you know, very vital and very necessary points that we Tibetans and. People supporting Tibet should keep in mind. And your notion of community, the Gorche, the intergenerational magic that's happening. And should continue to happen, I must say, is very, you know, effective, especially it gives a reminder to the Chinese. That we Tibetans will never be gone. And as you say, we are in this together. And Chimila, before concluding, I would like to personally thank you for, you just mentioned us, right? You just came from Europe right now and. You took out some time for us, so thank you so much, Chimila. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
Pleasure joining you. It was a pleasure seeing you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chimila. For more updates and videos by F N V A, click on the link and please subscribe to our channel. Thank you for watching.